You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one there. Heard around the world. Sherman marches for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. We'd like to welcome you all to the Monday, January 27th Fayetteville City Council Meeting. At this time, our great Honorable Bishop Councilman Larry Wright is headed to the podium. Lead us in the invocation. We ask that all would please rise for the invocation, after which please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another day. We thank you for the gathering of leaders. We thank you for this great city, Fayetteville, North Carolina. We pray for our mayor, our city council, our staff, and the citizens of this great city. As we come here tonight, we pray, God, that you would lead us and guide us in the decisions that have to be made pushing Fayetteville forward, making best decisions that all of our people could prosper, benefit, and grow right here in Fayetteville. We pray also tonight for the families of those that were lost in the horrible helicopter crash with Kobe Bryant, his daughter, and those seven other people that had lost their lives. We pray for the families and the loved ones that are grieving now for this terrible loss. We pray for the city. We pray for our country. Bless us, strengthen us, and may your grace keep us safe as we go forth in the mighty name of him who we serve the most, in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Well, Bishop Wright, wouldn't be fair without allowing you to tell us about yourself. We kind of know who you are, but tell us about, tell us about your ministry and how long you've been in ministry?
We're Heal the Land Outreach Ministry. We've been in ministry there downtown off of Campbell Avenue, 414 Hall Street for nineteen years there in that location. We have a ministry of outreach. We minister in every area of human capacity. We feed the homeless. We, I was the president of a ministerial council where we gave scholarships. And also, you know, we became a council member because we believe that ministry is not only inside the walls, but it's outside the walls of the church and real ministry is in the community. So I take what I do here with the city as something that God has mandated for us all to serve, and he that is service or servants among us are the greatest. So the greatest thing that you can ever do is serve and give back to your fellow man. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you for your service to the community in a number of capacities. At this time, we would, I would defer to Councilmember Waddell and Kingston who have a presentation to the Women of Steel Local 959. If you all would meet, Councilmember Kingston at the podium. She has a special gift for you.
Whereas, the Women of Steel is an activist arm of the United Steelworkers that evolved from the early women's causes that demanded that women have their rightful place within the USW Union. And whereas, the Women of Steel Local 959 is based in the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina. And whereas, the Local 959 group is a leading example of hard work and community outreach. And whereas, the Women of Steel Local 959 is responsible for numerous fundraisers and charity events each year, including the Walk of Life fundraiser for those with cancer, Operation Inasmuch to Feed the Hungry, and many more. And whereas, the Local 959 group also supports a great many important Fayetteville nonprofit groups through fundraising efforts and events, including the Falcons Children's Home, the Salvation Army, and the Fayetteville Animal Protection Society. And whereas, the Local 959 group is made up of Women of Steel, Alicia McPhee, Michelle Stewart, Don Letbatter, Crystal Beekman, and retiree Carla Gibson. And whereas, the Women of Steel Local 959 certainly deserves our thanks and recognition for all they do for the community and city of Fayetteville. Now therefore, I Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than two hundred and eight thousand citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim Monday, January 27th, in the year 2020, in honor of the Women of Steel Local 959, in witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 27th day of January 2020.
Thank you so much for what you all do for this community. Did you like to have words?
Sure. Our president would like to say.
All right, Mr. President.
Hello, Councilman Terry Bruington, President of Local 959. We represent the workers out there at Goodyear Tire. I just want to say I'm very proud of these ladies. They are a part of this community, and you know, the work that they do is volunteer work. They do it on their own. And again, you know, they want, they want the people in this city to know that our union loves this town, and they love the people and the families, their mothers, grandmothers, and you know, they do what they can to make this a better place. We love Fayetteville, and I love these ladies. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I totally am honored, but it's a team effort, and this is, there's other Women of Steel that work forty-two hours a week and volunteer their time that aren't here, and we just represent all of our union workers and factory workers. And I just wanted to say that we love Fayetteville. Fayetteville became my fate. I love it. Two hours in the mountains, two hours to the beach. We have the, the best of both worlds, and I love Fayetteville. If there's anything that the Women of Steel can do for our community, please, Kingston knows how to get ahold of us, and we will be there. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We love you guys too, and maybe we'll consider getting you to do a commercial for us. I like that.
Oh, that's right. Two hours here and two hours.
All right. So at this time, we will ask Mr. Jermaine Fletcher and the members of First Horizon Bank. Seems like they have some ching-ching for us. Meet you down.
Mayor, we'd like you to come down. As at this time, we have five members from First Horizon Bank here to present a check to the mayor for the Good Neighbor Home Buyer Loan Program in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
We'll do the picture first. Okay.
Hold on.
Wait a minute.
Come on, Jake.
city in this historic event. I think it's really important that we present to you an idea that we are here in the community. We're here to serve. We're here to be partners with you in this event. At First Horizon, we're proud to partner with you in the work, so we recognize that we're giving you fifty thousand dollars towards the Good Neighbor Program, Downpaving Assistance Program. At First Horizon, we recognize the value of partnerships in meeting the needs of the community through low to moderate income individuals. We're here to support. We brought a mortgage officer that's here a part of the, the program. We brought the Community Development Director. She came from Charlotte, just to show you how important it is, the work that we do, and how committed we are to Fayetteville. And we appreciate the time and appreciate just the partnership that we'll have with you, and look forward to continuing to do good work here. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the partnership. Thank you for investing in, in the community and, and for what you do, so we really appreciate that. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I, I want to ask Mr. Manning, are you still in the room, Carl Manning? Thank you for bringing, bringing us in on this opportunity. Thank you for bringing this to our attention so that we could work with Capital Bank to make this happen. This is a beautiful example of when our citizens are informed about what's going on at the city, and they come to their, their elected body and they say, hey, here's a chance for you to work with some people outside of your, your, your normal scope. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. Thank you very much.
Well, we have certainly acknowledged and witnessed the greatness of what makes Fayetteville a great community. At this time, another component to greatness is a member of our future, our youth, who joins us tonight on the dais. I'll go to Mayor Pro Tim Jensen to tell us all about her.
Well, tonight we have Zoe that is coming to tell us all about the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As was said, my name is Zoe McClendon, and I am the membership chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and I am from District Three. This weekend, we attended a state youth council conference in Winston-Salem to learn more about team building and leadership. One of the most impactful activities we did during this trip was a trust talk with the Winston-Salem Police Department where we discussed how to better help our communities and begin to mend and better understand the relationships between police and teens. We also learned that to be a good leader, you need to learn to communicate with others, value the opinions of others, and to remember that everyone that is a part of a team is valuable. We participated in team building activities such as the Human Knot and Traffic Jam, where we had to work together as a team, as well as discussing issues like mental health and teamwork, and how that plays a large role in the success of a team. Today, we also commenced our first anti-litter initiative for 2020, which will be a meme contest. We are encouraging students to send their best memes, whether it is funny or informative, because all of their efforts are appreciated. Thank you for having me this evening.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. Look forward to spending the evening with you, so thank you. All right, council, it's time to get down to business. This time, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve?
So be it, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion by Councilmember Wright, there's a second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent. Councilmember Wright. Did you intend to press?
No, but I will, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Further discussion upstairs, I think there was one item that we wanted to pull for explanation or were we good?
Yes, sir. If you would, let's pull, I'm sorry. Let's pull the...
So what we'll do is, Councilmember Wright, if you, if Councilmember here, if you tell us which item that was?
It's item 6.0420-1206.
Okay. All right. So Councilmember Wright's motion, if you could restate it, sir, is to approve with the exception of that item, right?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 6.04.
There's a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve with the exception of 6.04, there's a second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.04, Councilmember here?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have our staff, I guess our inspections, or maybe Dr. Newton, whoever to come forward. This is concerning 2105 Merkison Road. It was some emails and phone calls that have gone out concerning this house being on, I guess to receive some funding for demo. We know what we discussed, just kind of give us a review so everyone can hear.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we were asked to come and discuss this Merkison property, the address of which is 2105 Cindy Blot, who is in the hall, is also going to join me as a director.
2105 Cindy Blot?
Merkison Road, did I not say Merkison Road? I'm sorry. Sorry. Of Merkison Road, and Cindy Blot will be coming to answer that part of it. In terms of what you have in front of you, you have a request for demolition on four different properties, this being one in particular, in which the action being proposed is that you take official activity to allow us to proceed with this. We received late information from the city manager's office that they had indicated they'd like a little bit more time and tried to apply to the program that is in Community and Economic Development. Cindy Blot is now here, and she can talk on that portion.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, at this time, we do not have an active application from this resident. There were other applications for two other properties that we did demolish, and our properties actually have to go because it's federal funds through SHPO, and we've searched SHPO, and there's never been an application made for this property. And at this time, there's twelve homes on the waitlist for this program anyway.
So, Ms. Blot, just to reiterate that, so you said that you didn't find an application and that, what were you saying about this commercial versus residential?
So, the homes that we did demolish for the family were residential homes, and the intent of elimination of some of the blight with CDBG is to replace those homes with new homes. That was never done. In fact, this property was rezoned commercial. So now, we know we're not going to get those two homes back. Again, there is not an application for this third property anyway to even consider it at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember here?
Just ready for the motion, sir.
All right.
That's it, sir. You done?
I have, I have my, did my button actually?
It didn't, just now it did. Councilmember Waddell?
With the, the demolition grant, can a commercial property apply for a demolition grant, or is this specific only to residential properties?
Commercial properties can qualify if they have a redevelopment plan in process. So if they've already, they've already met with a contractor to rebuild the property, then yes, we'll give them the, the funding to remove the blight for redevelopment. But that's not the case in this one. That's not the case in this incident.
Councilmember, are you finished? Councilmember Waddell?
I am.
Okay. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, is staff recommending that we pull this particular address since there is no money to demolish this structure? Is that what's...
No, sir. Staff is suggesting that you keep it on, and you go ahead and take council action to initiate the process of us taking down that, which then puts a lien on the property for the cost of it. What they were trying to see happen was to get funds where there would not be a lien associated with the demolition. So our recommendation is you leave it just as it is.
All right. Thanks, sir. Councilmember Ingram?
Just for viewers' information, has the owners been involved in this process?
Yes. There, yes, the property owners, it's an estate, there are thirteen different heirs. All of them have been involved in that process to one degree or another in terms of us communicating with them. Whether or not each of the thirteen have responded back, we don't have indication that all thirteen have, but they have all been notified and involved in different parts of it. If you want further detail, we're happy to elaborate on that.
Thank you.
All right. Council, let me clear the board and look to you for action. Councilmember here, did you have a...
Yes, sir. No, just ready for the motion.
All right.
Sir, I, Mayor, and council, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the unhavocable structure demolition for item 6.0420-1206.
So there's a motion by Councilmember here, is there a second by Councilmember Dawkins? Any further discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right. Item 7.0, public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case, the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. At this time, we'll have Mr. Harmon present this item to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is P. 1942-F. The applicant is David Allen on behalf of the McKeithen family. I believe there are three heirs to this property, currently in SF-16. They're looking to, their original application was for MR-5 or Mixed Residential 5. The property is located at 7009 Phil Yaw Road, and it's just under fifteen acres. At the zoning commission meeting, staff did recommend denial. The zoning commission, after hearing all the evidence, moved to recommend an SF-6, a more restrictive district for this property. And it seemed during that meeting that both the applicant and the adjoining property owners were in agreement with that SF-6. Just to give you an idea of where the property is located, just off the map to the east is Yadkin Road, just off to the west is Riley Road. Really, the only big piece of property left there along Phil Yaw. The owners of this property have come in twice before. In 2011 and 2014, they were denied rezoning attempts on this property. Again, mainly single family around, but you can see that here to the northeast, that's a, an apartment complex, and here to the south is another apartment complex. And then, not on Phil Yaw, but over here is some more apartment-type housing. Our land use plan calls for single-family residential throughout that area, except for the medium density behind here. Just a few photos of the property. The first two on your, the one on your left and the one in the middle are the property just kind of straight on, and this kind of, the one on the right gives you an idea of what the property looks like from the road because it is in a downhill S-curve part, portion of Phil Yaw. Adjacent properties, as I stated before, there's some apartments in the neighborhood, but it's mainly single-family residential that kind of surrounds this property. Staff originally has to recommend denial of the MR-5, which is what was applied for. I'm not going to go through all of these right now. I'll go to the zoning commission recommendation, and the staff is okay with the zoning commission recommendation of an SF-6 as kind of a compromise, but that zoning commission did recommend the SF-6, that that zoning map amendment would be a compromise between developer and neighbors, that under the Single Family 6, any multifamily development would require a special use permit, which would have to be granted by city council through another or through a quasi-judicial process. And Single Family 6 zoning would be more in keeping with the surrounding zoning districts and development pattern. Do you all have any questions of staff before we open your public hearing?
I don't know if you all like...
I just pushed it.
Okay. All right. So, Councilmember here, was that a question?
Yeah, just for, for the public that are watching out there, and explain exactly what the, the SF-6 is for the residents that surround that zoning, please.
So, the, the MR-5, we'll start with that, which is what was applied for, allows multifamily by right. The SF-6 is a less dense, so you can't do as many units on, on the property with the SF-6. Plus, the only way to do multifamily is to come back to city council, back through a public hearing process, where all the neighbors would be notified once again, there would be ads in the paper, very similar to this rezoning process, but they would not be able to do multifamily without that.
But, but before we get to that point, the bulk of that zoning is, is single residential stature, right?
Correct. Correct. They still would be able, if they wanted to do single-family residential on the property under the SF-6, they could just do that by right as well.
Right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilmember Wright?
So, you said that staff recommended disapproval for FS-5?
Of the, of the MR-5.
MR-5. So, at this point, does staff recommend approval or just coming to us based upon where we are now?
Staff, staff does not have an issue with the SF-6, considering it is a single-family district, and they would have to come back to council for permission for multifamily.
So, the residents...
So the residents and the, um, and the, um, people that's building agree. They met and they agree with the F S six.
They seem to agree during the zoning commission meeting and that was why the zoning commission made their recommendation. I don't want to speak for either group. They'll have their opportunity in a minute and there are several signed up on both sides to speak.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, councilmember water?
Mr. Harmon, I'm looking at the legislative text under options. And option number three says deny the rezoning request. And in parentheses, it says recommend it by staff. And so my question this evening is, what was the catalyst for staff's change of heart in terms of the S F six zoning?
The, it's not a change in heart. The, uh, remember again, the original application was for M R five and that's what that recommendation is, to not go to the M R five. We're not, we didn't do a new recommendation on this. We did the same recommendation from the zoning commission, but we are not opposed to the S F six in that area.
And can you also, just for the purpose of, I think we, we touched on it briefly, but for the purpose of, um, anybody who may be unclear, can you define how many units can go into S F six versus M R five?
I believe under the, I'm, I'm having a hard time. Here it is. A hun, uh, two hundred and ninety-two units.
In the M R five, correct.
Would be allowed in the M R five. And under the S F, I believe, uh, S, S F six, I believe it's around a hundred and thirty units.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So it's quite a bit of difference.
All right. All right, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you.
Uh, madam clerk, if you call your first speaker.
May we have five speakers this evening? Our first speaker is Mr. Kenneth McKeithen.
Hello, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I am Kenneth McKeithen, twenty-eight thirty-six N C Highway eighty-two Dunn, North Carolina. On the, as is indicated already, on the second of August of this past year, we submitted to the city a request that our property be rezoned from the current S F fifteen to M R five. At their ten December two thousand nineteen hearing, the zoning commission denied this request, redirecting however, to a recommendation to council that our property be rezoned to S F six. This is the recommendation that you have before you tonight. And we welcome this compromise solution as best serving our needs and, um, and those of our homeowner neighbors. And so we respectfully request that you all approve this rezoning to S F six tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. James McKeithen.
Hello, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is James McKeithen. I reside at nineteen thirty-six Culpeper Lane. And that's in favorable and zip is two eight three zero four. And, uh, I just want to make a, a couple of brief comments that, uh, will help, hopefully help us put this into perspective. But, uh, I like to look at this idea as a win-win proposition. And, uh, several things could happen as a result of this. One is that, um, if I take these glasses off, I can see what I'm referring to. Uh, a more favorable climate for prospective buyers and under the existing classification scheme, um, the, the property is virtually, uh, unsellable. Uh, another thing to consider is, is the fact that there's, uh, a need for improved security. And we think that ultimately, uh, better things can come out of, uh, uh, the use of that property as opposed to what's, uh, taking place now. Um, one of the things that, uh, we have seen over the years is, is the foot traffic between, uh, the back of, uh, the, our property and on the front side on the Phil Yaw roadside. And of course, there's litter, uh, trash from time to time. And if you're walking through there, you probably will see some drug paraphernalia, that sort of thing. So, um, hopefully rezoning is going to lead us to a, um, a situation that would, uh, clear some of these problems up. Uh, one of the things that we're conscious of is, and, and I know our community colleagues feel the same way, is, um, improving the appearance. And we are proposing, what we're proposing will lead us to, um, will lead us to, uh, providing attractive appearance to our community, similar to the homes and properties, uh, adjacent, uh, our property. And of course, um, one of the things that's always at play, or maybe not always at play, but the need for, uh, consider finances in this proposition. And, uh, some of those are maybe more immediately, um, uh, recognized others down the road. But, uh, financial considerations will be there for, uh, direct developers, contractors, subcontractors, increased revenue from, and it looks like I have about reached my limit. But, uh, I would just say, we appreciate your consideration here this evening and, and, um, hope that, um, we can, uh, move forward. Thank you so much and y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. David Allen.
Good evening.
Hey, sir.
David Allen, three six seven Edinburgh Drive. Um, I've been helping the McKeithens for ten years on this property. I'm a real estate broker. Um, the first time we came before the board, we had it sold in contract at nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars from a company out of Raleigh to put apartments. It got voted down. Um, they tried again in a couple of years. Um, it got voted down. Since then, we've been trying to market it for the last three or four years at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And with the current U D O, we can't give the property away. Development costs has gone from ten thousand dollars a lot to thirty thousand dollars a lot. The property is fifteen acres, but over eight of it is wetlands. So even with the, the compromise here, we still will only get so many lots in there. But it will make it marketable. And so, um, I think the compromise will work adequately, at least to help themselves this property and develop it in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Fujimoto.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Ted Fujimoto. I reside at seven one two Roundtree Drive. I've been a resident since July of eighty-six, uh, retired military. I'm speaking in opposition to the original, uh, request that was for M R five. I attended the last hearing in two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen where the zoning commission and the city council, uh, denied the request. Uh, nothing has really changed in our area, except the traffic has gotten worse. And that's one of our major concerns about this, uh, rezoning is that, um, traffic on Phil Yaw is, because of the access control points on Fort Bragg, once they closed Riley Road, people were using Phil Yaw as a cut through. And so there's heavy traffic on Phil Yaw. And, and the new prop, I mean, this property that is trying to be rezoned is on Phil Yaw. And that's the only access point is Phil Yaw Road. So in this time period, or the last two years, from October two thousand seventeen to October two thousand nineteen, uh, our calls for service that we have received from our crime prevention specialists is that we've had nine hundred and fifty-four traffic stops, accidents, violations. So, you know, that's pretty heavy for our area. Now, they're not all on Phil Yaw, but, um, there's a lot of it on the side roads because people are using the side roads as cut throughs also. So that's our concerns there. Um, I've got people from our community watch that are in here representing and councilman here is our representative. We're trying to give some relief to the McKeithens, uh, because yeah, as a M R five, they can't sell the property. So we're kind of coming to a compromise that, uh, we'll go with S F six. But still our concerns on Phil Yaw Road is the traffic. Because icy conditions, they closed Phil Yaw Road during, um, if they put a turn, turn lane in that road, there's blind spots where if you come through, they're going to be cars stopped in the middle of the road. I had, um, given the, um, zoning commission a video that, uh, you could see where the, uh, traffic would be a definite problem. So, uh, like I say, I'm the, uh, Summer Hill Community Watch leader. So I'm listening to my community. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our final speaker for this item is Ms. Diane Rolet.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the chime. My name is Diane Rolet. I live at six four four six Freeport Road in the Summer Hill subdivision. I'm here to address my concerns about the proposed zoning for the McKeithen property located at seven thousand nine Phil Yaw Road. I come before you to ask questions about what matters are taken into consideration when you're making the decision to approve or disapprove a proposal like this. Although Mr. Fujimoto has already expressed our community's concern regarding the traffic on Phil Yaw and the surrounding side streets, may I ask if additional actions are planned to ensure traffic safety for those entering and leaving the one exit from the complex, as well as those driving by, such as an additional traffic light possibly triggered by a sensor? Will there be sidewalks along the Phil Yaw Road? Uh, does the city plan to request a green zone to be incorporated so that the, the area along the road is more natural looking? If you have single family homes that will butt up, actually, we have single families homes that would be butting up against the, the complex area. And I'm looking, I'm concerned about the privacy and the safety of those people that are already living there. We have an area just down the street from me where there are apartments. And my neighbor, before the two thousand eleven tornado, had a twelve-foot fence back there. Well, after the fence was torn down, he had to go back to the zoning and the zoning said, uh-uh, six feet, that's as high as you go. So now he has problems with the, the tenants of the apartment complex throwing things over the fence and into his pool and damaging property. And of course, it's hard to catch because they're on the other side of the fence. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned, wondering if, once these houses are built, is there going to be some kind of a permanent structure or fencing or something that will stop people from walking through there and using it as a shortcut and ending up on people's property for their safety and as well as, um, just, you know, vagrants going through or people committing crimes and finding it a short way to get out? Uh, if there are as many houses as we think there are going to be there, then we have to remember that there are going to be children in these houses and these kids have to go to school. So are the schools ready to take on these additional children? You figure at the minimum, they'll have two to three bedrooms and so these kids have to have a place to go. You also have to worry about the school buses. Do we have enough school buses to take care of these kids? And when the school buses pick them up, because they're going to have extra children, now we're talking about longer rides to and from school. Are we going to stop the school bus on the road on Phil Yaw? Or are they going to go into the complex? Because if they're on Phil Yaw, now we're adding more, uh, to the hassle of, of the traffic. Also, um, the sewer, the water, the natural gas, the dump, you know, the trash pickup, the police, the fire department, are they all ready to do this? Are they all ready to take on these extra areas? The last thing I'd like to say is it'd be nice, you know, to have extra pe, places for people to live. Uh, we can't use the military for that. Uh, they have places to live already. Thank you. I guess I got cut short. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Then we have no further speakers.
All right. So with that, I guess we'll close the public hearing. Uh, councilmember here, did I see you light?
Yes, sir. Mayor, before we go to the motion, if I could ask Mr. Newton or you, you, uh, yeah, Jane, Mr. Harmon can come back. Uh, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, well, I'll ask the question. Has there been, is this just for, uh, the rezoning? There hasn't, there haven't been any plans or anything proposed yet that we could look at some of the concerns that were just, came before us, is it?
No, uh, there haven't been any submitted this time. Uh, with one of the previous, uh, rezoning applications where they were looking to do apartments, they did submit something with it. But with this one, it's a straight rezoning. Um, but anything that's built there would have to adhere to all of the U D O standards.
Right. So to the, to the answer to the last, uh, lady that just spoken, whenever plans are done for the area, because right now, as you just heard, it's just for straight zoning as we've been talking about at our meetings. So, uh, when that comes back according to what our normal process is, then we can see the plans and then we, we go forward from there. Am I speaking correctly?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I'm, if.
Well, we have a couple more questions. Uh, councilmember water?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the, um, the residential base zoning districts on our website.
Yes.
This property is presently zoned S R fifteen?
S F fifteen, yeah.
S, excuse me, S F, I don't have my glasses on, forgive me. Presently zoned S F fifteen. Um, and, and what that reads is it accommodates single family detached residential development at low densities, fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot size, as well as small scale multifamily dwellings. Also allowed are complimentary uses such as parks, open spaces, schools, and place of worship. So the compromise is S F six, what's being offered today, correct?
Correct.
Which reads accommodates single family detached residential development at moderate densities. So it, it's a change from fifteen from, um, low to moderate with six thousand square foot minimum lot size. So a change from fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot size to six thousand square foot minimum lot size, as well as small scale multifamily dwellings, that's the same with fifteen. Also allowed, so here then we go to larger scale multifamily developments are allowed with special use permits. So if they wanted to come back and put a larger multifamily development, they would have to come back before council and have that approved through special use permit.
They, it would go through zoning commission again and then city council.
So the only difference between what they currently have and what they're requesting is the difference of nine thousand square foot minimum lot size, so from fifteen to six, and moving from low density to moderate density, which I'm assuming is explained by that lot size. Is that correct?
Exactly.
So for, for the purpose of, and I went through all that just to kind of say to the, to those who may be concerned about what the change might be should it come to pass. The change, as indicated, would not, if this S F six is what passes, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, it does not give carte blanche for a, a developer to come in and put up a multi-unit apartment, apartment complex. They would have to come back before council.
Correct.
And depending upon what that council's will was at that time would determine whether or not that would fly. So my, okay, so then my last question, and this is more to the property owner. The property owner indicated that the current zoning wouldn't let them give the land away, basically. So I'm wondering how this change makes a difference? Given that the change is so miniscule in terms of what it permits to happen versus what's already happening? And I don't know, is that a question that can be asked since, since the speakers are not up right now or?
So, so you can ask that of them, but I'll give you a simple answer.
Okay.
The current zoning will allow, I believe it's forty-seven lots on this fifteen acres, as opposed to under the S F six, about a hundred and thirty.
So what makes it more palatable for a developer is that you can get more lots in, meaning that you can turn a better profit based upon the cost?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Councilmember, uh, Ingram's question has been addressed. All right, we'll clear the board. Uh, councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, I'd like to make a motion that we follow the, at least the recommendation to single member, uh, F S six.
And, and the recommendation specifically is the compromised version, not what's presented in our packet, right? And, and the recommendation specifically is the compromise version, not what's presented in our packet, right?
Yes, the compromise version.
Okay. All right. Is it motion by Councilmember Harris to approve conditionally with the compromise that was presented? Uh, there's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. It i- it is, but I, I couldn't tell if he was second or not. Okay.
Um, and I don't, I, I think it's to the motion's point, but w- we'd also talked about traffic. So does this, is there some consideration that's being given should this, should this be approved to what will happen in terms of traffic? Because the last traffic study according to this was done in two thousand twelve. And we have seen a tremendous increase in the traffic in that area. And looking at this map, two thousand fourteen? Two thousand fourteen, still five years. So we're looking at a tremendous impact with one way in and one way out. Well, one street that you have access to and one street that you have can gain entry from, so.
So if it, if the motion passes and it moves forward, their development plan gets reviewed by a technical review committee in which all these items are looked at. And a traffic, an updated traffic count will be part of that and, um, traffic engineering will actually work through that. As to whether or not it can all be accommodated on that one access point, it may end up being an issue on that.
All right. Okay. All right. So Council, are these all questions for discussion or? Let me reset it if you have a question, okay?
I have a question.
Cause we've got several lights that have been on for a minute. All right, Councilmember Wright?
Uh, the question, one of, I'm sorry. One of, um, the speakers was talking about the entrance into Fort Bragg on, on both streets. And I think they said that Raleigh would be closed. Is, is that what I heard in the, in the future? Has someone mentioned that? Uh, they alluded, they alluded to it. But both of those, uh, gates are open and, uh, fully operational right now going onto Fort Bragg, I believe, because I've used both of those gates.
Yadkin closes.
But you.
I mean, uh, Riley Road closes early.
Plans are for Canopy Lane, uh, checkpoint to be open in July. And Riley Road is going to be open, but then the plan is to close the Yadkin Road Gate on the weekends.
So you still have two roads in that particular area?
Well, but now Yadkin Road Gate is supposed to be closed on the weekends. Right now Riley Road Gates are closed on the weekend.
Okay. So you're saying on the weekends or it's open during the week and just only will be closed on the weekend?
No, during the, uh, the week, Riley Road Gate is open to nine PM, then it closes. And then, but Canopy Lane, which will take some of the traffic from two ninety-five that are trying to get into Bragg, that won't open until a July timeframe because of manpower. And so, but when they do the Riley Road Gate twenty-four hours, the plan is to close the Yadkin Road Gate at night from, from nine, nine o'clock and then on the weekends.
And it'll be open during the work hours?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Wright now serve on the February Metropolitan Planning Organization. And Philial and this whole Riley Road, Yadkin Gate, this, this is a topic for discussion. Council, Council Lady Waddell is absolutely correct. Philial has got a serious amount of traffic. So it's going to be studied. A, a lady brought this up, one of the ladies that came up and spoke. Um, believe me, it's on our radar because of the thousands of cars that are using Philial every day into Riley and then the number of traffic, uh, crashes that we've had. So it is on the radar. Uh, you can communicate to Councilmember Wright or myself. We'll work with Councilmember Harris. But, but we're going to be following this for the next six months as it progresses with two ninety-five opening. And then the Realtor's got his hand up. Did you?
You are a signed speaker, right, sir? Okay.
As far as the impact on traffic, the two ninety-five taking all the traffic that was West Fayetteville down Riley Road is now using two ninety-five. I've got commercial property on Riley Road now that we're having trouble selling because we can't get a traffic count high enough to justify that on the other side of that. As far as what we're asking on zoning, I had mentioned it before and forgive me for my nerves. Um, is of this fifteen acres, eight acres have been given over to wetlands. So we only have seven acres. So with still restricted to six thousand, we probably won't be able to get half of what the zoning will allow, but still maybe double what we have currently now. It's the UDO and the development cost that with just forty homes, that no developer wants to, to touch this property. But again, over half of this will have that whole wetland buffer. And the most dangerous part of that curve is down in the bottom. The entrance will be at the top of the only developed piece of land. But the Riley Road, um, impact with two ninety-five has totally changed the, on the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council, we, we are, uh, not able to call any more witnesses because we've closed the public hearing. So we can continue to, uh, we entertain two rounds of discussion during motion discussion. Uh, Councilmember Dawkins, were you complete? All right. All right, Council, if there are no more, uh, discussion items. Uh, Mr. Harris, you want to restate your motion?
Yes, sir. I, I moved that we, uh, follow the, the substitute, uh, recommendation for a single member, uh, SF six.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Harris. There's a second by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Uh, Madam Attorney, what's going on?
So Mayor, was the motion to, uh, rezonate to the SF six?
To the compromise. He stated that in there, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
But there was a second already, I think, on the floor from Dawkins. But we had like an hour and a half of discussion, so I kind of forgot about it. All right. So, uh, Madam Clerk, was she, was Dawkins the second on the original motion? All right. So Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, no offense, but I had to go with the, all right. All right. All right, Council, discussion's over. It's time to vote. And this is for the compromise, uh, proposal that we have heard tonight. All those in favor or not? All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries. Thank God. All right. All right. Um, uh, Council, just prior to, uh, adjournment, based on the discussion upstairs under administrative reports, there was, uh, some consensus to, uh, have staff bring back some, uh, additional information for the February work session on item eight point zero three. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So, uh, I need a motion for that. Councilmember Davis?
I make the motion that we, um, uh, move the item, I guess, to the works, the February work session, item number eight zero three, um, as well as getting additional feedback and information from the staff in support of developing that plan.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Davis. There's a second by Councilmember Ingram. All right. Any discussion on that? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, motion carries, Mr. Manager. Um, well, that, uh, tomorrow is some day that I'm not sure what day. But Councilmember Ingram, tell me what tomorrow is other than Tuesday.
Tomorrow is our very own city manager's birthday.
Oh, my.
And if you could wish him a happy birthday.
No one knew that. I had no idea. We only are reminded three hundred and sixty-four days a year. All right, Council, if no other business, we'll look to you, uh, to adjourn.